We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, May the 16th, 2024, and we'll have our invocation by our very own Ms. Emily Hardaway, our Community Outreach Coordinator for the City of Douglasville. After we have the invocation, the Pledge Allegiance will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller. Please stand if you would for the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day that you have given us. As we enter into graduation season, I pray that you be with all the graduates in our lives, Lord, and in our community, and guide their next steps as they enter this new journey of their lives. Please be with our mayor and council this evening. Grant them discernment and wisdom to lead our city well. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge, and thank you, Ms. Emily, for that beautiful invocation. Graduation is a very special time, so we're excited about that. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a meeting where it's just a work session. Agenda items that are presented this evening have discussion, but we will not vote on those items until our official meeting, which is next Monday at our legislative, I mean, our regular voting meeting. Official action will be taken at that time. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues I'd like to go over with everyone, and we'll read these items, and then we'll begin the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack, calling out anyone's names or a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from this requirement, a second deviation, we're requesting you leaving the chambers this evening. So we ask that you will please try to be professional and not call anyone out or attack anyone verbally. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud or react to speakers, or speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation when you're at the podium. Please address, when you're at the podium, all of your concerns to the committee chairperson or to myself, and we will respond or have our staff respond. I remind you that we're only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings, and if you have a cellphone or electronic device, I ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. This is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read that agenda item, then that person or applicant will make his or her presentation to myself and council members. We'll possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our determination and decisions for next week. After that, the committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item and 20 minutes for those in opposition. Each person has five minutes to speak. Before you come to the podium, we ask that you would please fill out a speaker card. There are some blue cards outside on the desk. Please put your name and address on those cards and hand those cards to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will put those cards, that information, into the record. Prior to approaching the podium, give your card to the Assistant City Clerk. Come to the podium, give just your name and address, and then you can talk to us for five minutes. So unless you're the applicant, you have a little bit, a little more time. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is a meeting. We don't have questions and answers. We're going back and forth or debating or arguing. We're just here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions. I believe that's it. If you have any printed material, please give those materials to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will make copies and disseminate that information to us. That's a lot of talking. Hopefully, we're all on the same page and everyone understands the procedure and protocol and how the meeting will be handled this evening. So now we have paper agendas, if you'd like one of those outside on the desk, and/or you can follow us on the screen. So we'll move on. We've done the first three items, and now we're at a presentation. I do have a proclamation in collaboration with the National Leagues of Cities to clear May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in the City of Douglasville, and our city manager will accept this proclamation for the NLC. I'll read the proclamation, and then our city manager can come forward and have any comments, as she is a former chair of the City and County Managers Association for the State of Georgia, and still serves on that board and other important boards in the State of Georgia. Office of the Mayor proclamation, National Cities, Towns, and Villages Week, May 19 through the 25th, 2024. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing their interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 states, municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of the cities, towns, and villages in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local governments. And whereas Douglasville is a proud member of the National Leagues of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from local governments. And whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. I don't know if that's subjective or not, but that's great. And whereas Douglasville was the first incorporated, Douglasville was first incorporated in 1875 and proudly serves today, for myself, Mayor Rochelle Robinson, the City of Douglasville, and a municipal workforce of 344 dedicated public servants. Now therefore, I, Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, do hereby designate the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Week in celebration of America's local government and the National Leagues of Cities' historic centennial anniversary. So proclaimed this 16th day of May, 2024. Our city manager, would you please come forward and accept the proclamation? If you have any words to say, then we'll come around and take a photo with you.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, this is a proclamation on behalf of you all. I know several of you all have participated in National Leagues of Cities events, very similar to the Georgia Municipal Association, and National Leagues of Cities advocates for you all on behalf at the federal level. If you all remember ARPA funding, the National Leagues of Cities was a key organization that helped to provide support to the federal government to make certain that local governments received a direct allotment to its call for us to provide for that COVID funding relief, and that was the first time in history that local governments were particularly our size, that were nonentitlement communities, that were able to receive that funding. So National Leagues of Cities is an important organization, and I think that we all, and I'll speak on behalf of you all, are proud to be a part of it.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Let's give the City Manager a hand, as she represents us for the National Leagues of Cities. We'll come around and take a photo with you.
All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And then one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much for indulging us in presenting that proclamation. We'll move on now to item number five, and that committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under the Economic Development Committee.
Yes, sir.
And that is authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to continue the city's participation in the Georgia Classic Main Street program, which we've been doing for quite a number of years now. And you are not Will Smith.
I am not.
And not even close to being Will Smith.
I am not. I'm your Deputy City Manager, Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As you read, this is a routine agreement that we do every year with Georgia Main Street or Main Street America to ensure that we continue the items that we need to be in accredited Main Street program, as well as continue with the items set forth to have a successful Main Street program for our downtown businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any comments or questions from the mayor or council? I think we've all, most everybody here has had some level of participation with this through either the DDA or Main Street program. Ms. City Manager and I grew up on, in that program in the city, back in the early 1900s, I think it was.
Not the 1900s.
I'm assuming there's no controversy here, so I think we'll, if everybody's fine, we'll place that on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and Deputy City Manager standing in for Mr. Smith, our Economic Development person. We'll move on then to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We have one item denied. Authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Mike Westmoreland Contracting, Inc. for West Pines Golf Course Driving Range improvements in the amount of $357,132, and Mr. Cartwright's here to tell us all about it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cartwright, 9090 Rose Avenue. So we're excited to finally take on the driving range renovation and make an improvement to the facility that we've been talking about for a while now, and we really see this as kind of our last little eyesore to take care of when you come out to the facility. So we're excited to work with Westmoreland Contracting on this project. He was the low bid for the project, and we feel like he was probably the most qualified bidder for the project as well. So that's a pretty great duo for us for this job. So any questions that you guys may have, be happy to answer them.
One question I had, reading over the attachment, I was a little confused. The bid amount that I see in here, the low bid amount, is that accurate, or was there an issue with that?
So Westmoreland made a calculation error when they were totaling their bid, but working with Miranda and her office, we've, you know, let him know that he either has to honor that bid or throw that bid out. He still would like to do the project and is honoring that bid price. It is reflected in the contract that we will not do a change order for that error, and we are covered to get the whole project done for that lower price.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments? I'll start with Madam Mayor, and then we'll work our way down to Councilman Davis.
Thank you so much, Coach. All right. I was wondering why, Mr. Cartwright, because of the other bid, I mean, there's always a range, but the most expensive or one that came in at the higher number was almost double.
I'm not sure why that one is so high. The only thing I can come up with is they are not local, so they must have seen our advertisement for the bid online and threw their hat in there. But the other two companies are local, so I'm assuming that there's a lot less travel expenses involved for them. But that one's pretty up there.
Yeah, it is.
So we're not going with them, for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Cartwright. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I saw Councilman Davis's hand first, and then we'll come back to you, Councilman.
Yes. On this project, is it rebuilding the whole place, or what are we doing? Grass, or what are we doing?
So it's going to regrade, regrass, and re-irrigate that whole driving range section. So a general overview of the project is right now, if you hit a range ball off of our tee, you basically cannot see it land until it gets 200, 220 yards away from you. So a lot of people are going to the range to figure out, well, how far do I hit these different clubs? And they can't figure that out because it's a blind shot over a hill. So we're going to push the dirt out and regrade the area so that you can see shots land, I'm going to say approximately after 100 yards, so relatively a short distance. And so it's going to be a much better practice facility for our members and guests.
For 357,000, that's a lot of money.
It's a lot of dirt in it, a lot of grass to move.
All right, thank you.
Before I go, before I go to Councilman Miller, I would just say that the golf course is making money, right?
Absolutely. So we see this as an opportunity to increase the money we're making in the future as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I, you know, yes, Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to, and I think I speak for pretty much everybody up here, to compliment you on what you've done with this golf course you brought, we brought into the 21st century, and you've done some amazing things. It's a first-class facility.
Thank you.
However, you and I will have a conversation about what you did to my maintenance shed.
Oh, no. Is it down?
We'll have a conversation offline on that.
Okay, okay. I didn't know the maintenance shed was down.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Yes. Ladies, any?
Thank you. Yes. How long will this renovation last?
It'll be approximately two months. Obviously, being so outdoors, a lot of weather dependency there, but we've been given a timeline of six to nine weeks.
Okay. And when are we looking to start that?
Roughly the middle of June. So once we get all the ink on the paper and the contractor knows that everything is finalized, he'll get us, you know, next in line on his schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
And if we're farther down the road than that, it would change the scope of the project because this, we're able to do it a little bit cheaper because the bulk of the grass will be grown from sprigs rather than sod. If we started the project, let's say in August, for instance, it wouldn't be a long enough growing season, and we would have to sod the whole thing, and you'd be looking at a higher price.
That's good to know.
So getting it started in June, July, at the latest, is very key for the project.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Chris. I know you're the golf pro. Is this where I'm thinking the driving range is?
Where we have shot the fireworks off every year.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Can we, okay, what's going to happen to the Fourth of July?
We'll still be able to do it. Yeah, that's not an issue. We'll just have to clean up the debris a little quicker than maybe we normally would. But, you know, if you all have been out there for the Fourth of July, you know that that fairway is pretty rough-looking, you know, a lot of mud and dirt, and we lose golf balls that get stuck in the dirt. So this will make it look like a fairway, like one of our holes on the golf course.
And what are the golfers going to do in the interim with those six to eight weeks or however long?
They're going to wait patiently.
They're going to wait patiently? They just have to get out on the course and try those 18 holes?
We will set up some nets temporarily on the first tee for them to make some warm-up swings. We won't, you know, charge for that, obviously, but just so people can get a warm-up in before their round, we will make that accommodation.
Okay. Have you gone to the PGA yet?
I was there two weeks ago.
What happened?
Didn't play so well, or else I wouldn't be here tonight. I'd be at the PGA Championship.
Okay. Well, you were there. It's like the Academy Awards. You were there, so you still won.
I was there, and I'll be there next year. I've already qualified for next year, so.
Well, that's good.
We'll give it another try.
Yeah. That's, you know, sometimes like Jack Nicholson, you have to keep going. You'll get your, you'll get your Academy Awards.
That's true.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? I'd like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday, if that's okay with council. Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. Appreciate all you all do.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee. That's chaired. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tem if you don't mind taking that committee, please.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Housing and Community Affairs Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight, Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, chaired by Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee tonight, and that is to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 38-18E5 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Douglasville to update the state code section referenced for appellate procedures of an abatement court order.
Ooh, some mouthful.
Ms. Miranda Jordan will interpret that into normal human language for us, legallyse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Miranda Jordan, Staff Attorney, 6695 Church Street. As I was reviewing our code for the purposes of beginning some abatement procedures for the city, I noticed that there was a reference to an outdated state code section that has to do with an appeal. So if somebody had the court determine that their property needed to be abated by the city, and they wanted to file an appeal, there was a reference to a code section in the state law that no longer exists. So this is a housekeeping matter to replace that with the correct code section.
We're so thankful to have someone like you who understands these things. Any questions or comments from mayor or council? I didn't think so. If it's the council's will, I'd like to place item A on the consent agenda for Monday. So done?
Looks like it's okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That is all we have under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. I appreciate you taking that committee for me. The next committee is Personnel Organization Committee. I'll ask the Vice Chair, Dr. LaShawn Burdany, please, if you would, take this committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have one item tonight. Item reads as follows. Reappoint B. Keith Rollins as Chief Municipal Court Judge for a term of May 21st through the 24th through June 30th through 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign an employment agreement with him for that purpose. All right. I don't have any questions at this time. Do we have any questions, Madam Mayor, or from our council?
I do not.
Go on. Okay. Can this item be added to the consent agenda, or do we have to vote on it on Monday? Yes. Would you like to make any comments, short comments?
Where do I sign?
So I would like to add this to the consent agenda for Monday. Is that okay?
Looks like it's fine.
Thank you. No other items under personnel.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. We appreciate it. Congratulations, Judge. I will move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have just a few items this evening.
Just a few.
Just a few. The first item is item number 24-114. That was tabled from April 15th, 2024, and says to hold a public hearing and consider a request to amend Exhibit C of Ordinance 2021-56 to amend Condition 14 regarding camera systems throughout the community to require, and said vehicular tag reader system to be installed at the entrance to the development for 13.83 acres on Van Sant Road and Land Lot 902, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 09021820018, application by Starlight Homes. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is here to discuss this with us.
Okay.
Hello, Marissa Jackson, Planning and Zoning Administrator, 6695 Church Street. You will recall that this item was a request to amend a zoning condition for a town home development that is currently underway. Staff is requesting that this item is tabled again to the May 30th and June 3rd council meeting. The additional time will allow staff to do additional data gathering and prepare a discussion for council in advance of taking action on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. And I know that we did speak about this earlier, and you said, as you just stated, that you guys are still looking into some data to present at council, and we've determined that it will not affect the construction of the town homes at this time either. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Council, did you guys have questions? No? Okay. Well, with that being said, I think at this time, we just say we're taking no action, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, ma'am. Moving along. Our next item is 24-164, and that is to amend Ordinance 2022-23 to correct the ordinance to conform the application for rezoning from general commercial and R2 to PUD and the contents of the presentation in public hearing, which took place on May 12 of 2022. And Ms. Shayla Reed is going to talk to us about this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shayla Reed, 6695 Church Street, Community Development Director. This item is an item that you've heard back in 2022. During the time that this item was presented to you, staff presented it as a PUD item. The staff report had PUD items listed within the staff report. The applicant presented it as a PUD, but unfortunately, staff and the planning team did not provide it as a PUD. It was provided as a PRD. So when it was signed as a resolution, it was signed as PRD. So we're asking to correct that and place it as a PUD. We went back and forth, looked at the videos, and checked the minutes. Everything's reflective of a PUD action. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Council, did you guys have questions regarding this item? No? I think it was kind of straightforward. Are you guys okay with placing this on the consent, then? Wonderful. Looks like a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item 24-147, is to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from public semi-public district to heavy industrial district for 2.526 acres at 1435 Municipal Parkway and Land Lot 735, District 18, Section 2, parcel ID 07351820017. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is here to discuss this with us also.
Hello. This is a request for rezoning from PSP Public Semi-public to HI Heavy Industrial. The Public Semi-public zoning district is reserved for public services, so for example, city hall, schools, things that serve the public. This site was previously owned by the Development Authority, which may be why it had the Public Semi-public zoning designation, but it did have a similar industrial user using the site for many years. The applicant is here today to amend the zoning to heavy industrial, which is more in alignment with how the site is being used.
Thank you for that.
Items C and D are related. Item C is a request for rezoning, and item D is a request for variance.
Perfect. Okay. Council, do you guys have questions regarding this item? No?
We have an applicant.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come down and speak to us about this?
Evening, everyone. Joe Fowler, Post Office, Box 49 in Douglasville. Allow me to introduce Mr. Alex Gonzalez, who's the local president of Craig Wire, Lyndon Belcher, Vice President of Operations, and then Brent Portwood, who is the plant manager. If you have questions, we're going to talk to the guy who does it every day, but his bosses are here to correct anything that he might say, if anything incorrectly. I represent Craig Wire Products. They have actually bought this facility, and they're seeking to rezone it from the classification that you've just heard her explain to heavy industrial. And then the basis for the variance is to increase a portion of the building height from 50 to 60 feet. The property, as you know, was located on industrial, I'm sorry, Municipal Parkway. Until two months ago, when this property was acquired by Craig Wire, the building had been owned by an entity known as Electrical Fiber Systems. They'd been there for ages. That's an Australian company. They manufactured insulating tapes and insulating cable and electrical fiber yarns. They'd been there for about 20 years, and they'd done so under an industrial revenue bond because they received a tax abatement, which meant that the title had to be vested in the Development Authority so they could get the tax exempt status under the tax plan. That ended title was never reverted to Electrical Fiber Systems, and so the zoning remained by that classification. Currently, zoning boards are not changing the underlying classification, even if you have a tax abatement. But what's happening tonight is because the property has been acquired by Craig Wire, we're simply asking the city council to rezone it to the we're simply asking the city council to rezone it to the zoning classification that it would have been had it not been under the bond abatement. I will note that, as you're familiar with it, the site is bounded to the north by four lots of similar size. All those are actually two acres stacked on top. You get to Industrial Boulevard to the west of Municipal Parkway, all heavy industrial. This one's two and a half acres. And then to the east of this property, adjoining immediately to the east and then going up to the north, are heavy industrial uses there. There are nine parcels to the east, ranging from two acres to just over eight acres. Craig Wire Products has been in business seventeen years, and for a significant portion of that time, they've been on Shattuck's Industrial Way, actually just around the corner of Industrial Boulevard. They need a second location. They've been blessed. The space that they have now acquired will enable them to manufacture magnetic wire, insulated copper wire, and some other things that you'll hear in a moment. They currently have sixty-nine employees at this new location. They'll add thirty more over the next two years and potentially more as things progress. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval. And if you've got some questions about what they're doing, as I mentioned just a moment ago, Mr. Portwood can respond to those. We are requesting your approval of the rezoning. It is rezoning consistent with what's in the neighborhood, and likewise will be almost exactly like what was happening earlier. So any questions for Mr. Portwood, or for me, you'll be more than glad to respond. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Yes, Mr. Miller, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate bringing additional jobs into the community investment.
Thank you. We appreciate you bringing the jobs into the community and the investment. I don't want to, don't mean to jump ahead on an item, but since Mr. Fowler had mentioned it, I assume you're raising the height on the building has to do with the internal operations of the facility?
Good evening, Mayor and Committee members. Yes, raising the roof is part of the building to accommodate vertical machinery. The current roof structure variances to fifty-four, take it to sixty, would allow us to stand the equipment vertically. The rest of the building will house additional manufacturing equipment as well.
But it's purely functional.
I'm sorry?
You say, it appears to be purely functional while you're doing that, though.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Were there any other questions or comments of council? Okay. Related to that next item while you've brought it up, I just wanted to make sure that I did understand correctly. It's just that very back portion on the backside of the building where you're going to be raising, or you're requesting to raise a small portion of that roof to allow. It's not the entire building.
Correct. If you stand at the road, look at the building, it's the far end of the building. So the furthest away from the road, there's vacant lot behind us. So it's obscured, for the most part, from the road. We did submit a rendition of the facility, proposed addition to it. So yes, it's, it's.
I don't think so. Okay. All right. I appreciate that so much, guys. Thank you so much for that information. With it being, Mr. Fowler, did you have?
Just one quick thing. We've presented, actually, the variance and the rezoning together. The variance is only to deal with the far end of the building where the height would be raised. That's the various, that's the component for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, guys, let's go ahead and open up the floor if we have anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this item. And as Councilman Davis likes to say, if there are no takers, we're going to go ahead and close this public hearing. And guys, we will take up that portion of the, of the meeting on Monday for a vote. All right. Is this right? Yeah, D? Sorry, I just, it was actually more than a few items, so I had to make sure I was counting down right. Our next item is item twenty-four dash one-four-eight. And that is to hold a public hearing and request for a variance from Section five-point-zero-five of the Unified Development Ordinance to increase the maximum principal building height from fifty feet to sixty feet on a landlot of two-point-five-two-six acres at fourteen-thirty-five Municipal Parkway and Land Lot seven-thirty-five, District Eighteen, Section Two, parcel ID zero-seven-three-five-one-eight-two-zero-zero-one-seven. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is here to help us understand this item.
Hello again. The applicant is requesting rezoning to heavy industrial. The maximum height in the heavy industrial zoning district is fifty feet. The applicant needs additional height as part of their operation. So they're requesting a variance to allow an additional ten feet in height to have a maximum of sixty feet.
Okay. And just so that we're all clear, that before this item comes here, that you've already ran this through all of our public sectors, including the fire department, to make sure that this was acceptable to be raising that roof height?
That is correct. The development review team has reviewed the request.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Council, did you guys have any questions of Ms. Jackson? Yes, Coach?
And I think you already pointed this out. We're just talking about part of the building, not the entire roof.
That is correct.
One, one part of the building. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Mr. Fowler, did you have anything else that you wanted to add to this portion? Okay, thank you. Well, guys, since this is a public hearing, let's go ahead and open up the floor if we have anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this item. Now is your chance. And if we don't have anyone, we're going to go ahead and close that public hearing, guys, and we will take this item up on Monday as well. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay. And now, our next item is item twenty-four dash one-six-three. That is to hold a public hearing and consider a request for variance from Section eight-point-zero-one of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the required parking spaces from seven-hundred-and-fifty to one-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces and a variance from Section eight-point-zero-three to increase the maximum light mounting height from twenty feet to forty feet on a landlot of fifty-five-point-three-seven acres at seventeen-oh-one North River Road and Land Lot one-seventy-three, District One, Section Five, parcel ID zero-one-seven-three-zero-one-five-zero-zero-one-two. And Ms. Marissa Jackson is down here to talk to us about this item.
This request is a two-part variance. The first part is to reduce the parking from seven-hundred-and-fifty required spaces to one-hundred-and-twenty-five spaces. The second part is to increase the maximum light height. Regarding the parking, the ordinance says that we are required to have one parking space per thousand square feet. This facility is seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. So that would require seven-hundred-and-fifty spaces. That's a lot of asphalt. And since this isn't a use that has a lot of traffic or a lot of employees, that would just create a lot of impervious surface and a lot of asphalt that isn't being used. So the applicant is requesting to reduce the parking requirement based on their anticipated traffic and employee levels. The second part is regarding the lighting height. Staff is recommending a condition that the applicant is required to use downcast lighting. That would help to prevent some of the light pollution that might be caused by higher light poles.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Council, did you guys have questions of Ms. Jackson while she's up here? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That seven-hundred-and-fifty parking spaces, I know it's in our U D O. Is that coming out of the International Building Code? Is that a recommendation from the?
I'm not sure exactly where that came from. It's one of the conditions in the Unified Development Ordinance in the parking section.
Trying to figure out the mathematics behind that. I understand how the calculation works. I'm just trying to figure out the logic behind the mathematics for industrial development because typically so many facilities don't have anywhere near that number. And we've gone over this a number. We've had quite a few applicants come through requesting us to drastically reduce the amount of parking. I'm just wondering why we have a part of our U D O that calculates out the parking spaces so high. It might be worth taking a look at that to see if there's, if there's, if we can restructure the parking requirements for industrial park, for industrial lots.
Yeah, that's a, that's a standard. That's in the U D O, but we can definitely take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. I did have a question about the second item, item E with the lighting, and to increase the maximum lighting height from two, from twenty to forty feet. And that would help to prevent the lighting from going on any residential, or what's the rationale behind that?
The applicant can speak more to the rationale. But the request for downcast lighting was to try and prevent the lighting from going up into the space that could potentially impact neighboring properties. If we have the downcast lighting, it's more anticipated to shine down on the ground around the facility rather than going up into the air.
Okay, so it is about protecting the privacy or the intrusion of the resident. Is that correct? Or any?
The, the condition will help with the light intrusion to the residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also reduces light pollution as well.
Right.
The extra twenty feet is to provide enough lighting for security and safety, I'm assuming.
That's my understanding. The applicant can also speak.
Guys, if you guys would like to, if you'll just give us your name and record, if you want to come on up and you can tell us what's, what you're trying to accomplish.
Sure.
Good evening.
Mayor and council members, thank you for having us up here. My name is Chip Scaglioni. I'm with DC Blocks. We've got Dylan Callahan with Thomason Hutton, our civil engineer. Dylan, you want to sit behind the presentation, or do we need to go into the presentation itself? If you, we have a small presentation.
Is there another opportunity, Ms. Jackson, for them to do their presentation, or this is their? You have another item?
Yes, this is the time for their presentation.
Okay. It's up to you, Madam Chair.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Dylan Callahan with Thomason Hutton, two-two-zero, North Main Street in Greenville, South Carolina. Marissa did a good job kind of covering everything, so I can make this a little, a little shorter. But I would like to give you some background about the project, our variance ask, and specifically some of the questions you've presented so far, we'll, we'll cover real quick. So again, I'm with Thomason Hutton. We are the civil engineers for DC Blocks for this site.
Do we have, do we have this, Ms. Jackson?
Page thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Madam Pro Tem and I are looking. We're on page twenty-eight. Oh, we're ready. We're with you on page thirty-two.
Good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So to recap, we have two variances that we are seeking. Number one is a reduction in our parking count for the site. And then number two is an increase to the site lighting maximum height. Some background on the project. This is a vicinity map to show you. Douglasville is located to the west. We are off of Riverside Parkway on North River Road. That is a corridor that has other data center uses on that, on that road. We are seventeen-oh-one North River Road. We are currently zoned as LI Light Industrial, and a majority of the parcels around us are LI Light Industrial, with the exception of residential to the north on Summer Lake Road. This is a screenshot of our site layout. This has two data centers proposed. Across the two buildings, there are seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand square feet approximately. And so we did go through a D R I process that was completed with A R C and G R T A in early April of this year. And currently, there are activities on-site for mass grading only, which is essentially just moving dirt to, to get pad-ready. So it's just grading activities right now. To touch on the specifics within the U D O and the reason for our variance, Section eight-oh-one requires us to provide one space per one-thousand square feet for a data processing use. So this is where we're coming up with our required seven-hundred-some-odd parking spaces. And then Section eight-oh-three does outline a limit of twenty feet for the site lighting. For the parking, again, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two spaces is what the U D O requires of us. We are asking for variance to reduce to one-hundred-and-twenty-five spaces. The data center facilities, majority of the square footage is allocated to computer components and mechanical systems for cooling. So there is a very low need for active employees on-site. There's a much lower employee count than, say, a manufacturing or distributing warehouse of similar square footage. So based off of the owner's anticipations, for both buildings, we're expecting approximately eighty employees across all shifts, which means that our one-hundred-and-twenty-five should be able to support what their needs are for this site. For the site lighting, specifically to touch on our ask here, the twenty-foot is the limit for the height from the U D O. We are asking for forty feet because we have a large site. It's approximately fifty-five acres. Our campus is not the whole fifty-five acres, obviously, but we do want to have an efficient lighting scheme. And a higher mounting height will allow us to space those light poles out, reduce overall fixtures, and it will also give us a benefit to our security. So security is a very big deal for these data center campuses. It is a top priority. The way that's managed across the site was, is with cameras, and typically they are mounted on the poles. So a twenty-foot height limitation will drive our, our security cameras down, and that will impact our security coverage and create a less efficient layout. That is the, the primary ask for the site lighting, both illumination and security. Just to touch real quick on the item that Marissa had covered, regarding light pollution and the perimeter, we are comfortable with a condition to ensure that our fixtures are not going to create any, what we call, light trespass across the property lines. When we do go for submittals with this variance in hand, we will have a photometric that outlines the illumination across the site, not just our paving, so that the reviewers can review that information. And that is an image of the proposed fixture there. So it is not a diffuser that will send out in all directions. It will be directed towards, towards the illumination areas. And Marissa did a good job to, to touch on some of these, but the difference in parking is six-hundred-and-thirty spaces. For us, that's approximately four acres of paving that's going to have to go in, and it will ultimately be an unused parking lot. There are implications to stormwater and environmental controls that would have to be addressed if this was a requirement. But because it would be unused, we're requesting the variance to eliminate that need. And then the site lighting impact, as I touched, based off the twenty-foot limitation, we would have a large number of light fixtures and a larger number of security cameras to reach our needs for illumination, security, and safety on the site. So just to reiterate what our variance is, we're asking to reduce the site parking requirements down to one-hundred-and-twenty-five total. We believe that will meet the end-user needs for the data center, as well as just overall reducing our development impact that'd be required to accommodate that number of parking spaces. And then the increase in the site lighting to forty feet will allow us to provide a better, secure, safer site for our, for our security needs and the owner. I hope that addresses some of those questions initially.
That was very helpful. Thank you very much. Council, did you guys have questions of the applicant while they're up here? No? Wow, look at that. All right. Guys, I appreciate your presentation so much. I'm trying to make sure. Was this one not a? Is this one a public hearing? There's like, I can't even count E anymore. Okay. Well, guys, this one is also a public hearing. So at this time, let's go ahead and open the floor up for anyone who may be here this evening that would like to speak either for or against this item. And if we don't have anyone, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting as well. And we will take this item up on Monday. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're getting there now. We are. Next item is item twenty-four dash one-five-seven. Says to consider a request for a final plat approval for the purpose of consolidating four lots for forty-one-point-four-three-zero acres at Preston Boulevard and Bob Arnold Boulevard and Land Lot six-seventy-seven, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcels Two and Five and Land Lot six-seventy-eight, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Ten, and Land Lot seven-zero-nine, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Two. And Mr. James Gordon is here to speak to us about this item.
Hello.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council, I'm James Gordon, six-six-nine-five Church Street, Engineering Department. This item is a follow-up of an item from 2021 for Gray Star Sweetwater Apartments. Recently, we, we discovered that the initial plat that you approved in 2021 has not been recorded at the courthouse. So this is a follow-up to have this plat get a final signature and... So this is a follow-up to have this plat get a final signature and recording.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Okay, so then we're not actually taking any action. We're just looking to get signatures on it so that they can get it recorded. Counsel, did you guys have questions of Mr. Gordon about this item? No. That being said, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. All right, guys, last item, I promise, and that is item twenty-four dash one seven four. Says to consider a request for revised final plat approval for Sylvan Phase Four to correct a line dimension along track five on fifty-seven point nine nine acres at seventy-six hundred Wood Road and Land Lot one sixty-two, District two, Section five, parcel ID zero one six two zero two five zero 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 one. And Mr. James Gordon is here to help us with this item also.
Good evening. This item was brought to you approximately a month ago with this development. And what was discovered after it was finalized and recorded was that there was a typo on, right in the lower right-hand corner of the track four lot. That is the only thing that is changing on this drawing.
So it wasn't a broken tape measure?
Excuse me?
It wasn't a broken tape measure?
I guess so.
You don't think so? All right. Counsel, did you guys have any other questions of Mr. Gordon regarding this item? No. Then let's get this fixed. Are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? All right. Mr. Gordon, thank you so much. Madam Mayor? That is all that we have this, this evening for planning and development.
You did a wonderful job. Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. We'll move on then to, you have another committee, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Marissa, for bringing those items to us. I will move on then after that to item number twelve, which is Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee. The chair is Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item. It reads as follows. authorize the Douglasville Police Department to apply for the 2024 Bulletproof Vest Grant from the United States Department of Justice, which is also DOJ, Bureau of Justice Assistance, in the amount of thirty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for half the cost of forty-two bulletproof vests. Chief Sparks.
Yes, Mayor, Counsel. This is a reoccurring grant that we get every year from the Bureau of Justice. We have to continually outfit our men and women with updated vests. So right now, we have forty-two vests, and these vests cost eight hundred and sixty-five dollars per vest. So the total cost is thirty-six thousand three thirty. And the Bureau of Justice will reimburse us half of that, and then we'll pay half of eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars for the vests. These vests, they expire every five years. So they are level three A vests that we get all men and women. So this is something we come up with every year, and, and so we back here for this year.
Thank you, Chief Sparks. Are there any other, are there any questions? Yes, Madam Mayor?
Chief, what do you do with the old vests?
I'm sorry, Madam Pro Tem.
You would like to have one?
Like Madam Bear first.
You want one? You want one?
Well, we train with them. SWAT team go out and we, we shoot, fired it, fired them. And so we do a lot of training. We have given them to the fire department, you know, but they understand that at a five-year mark. I know we have assisted some of these police departments. One while we tried to send some over to Ukraine.
Oh, okay.
You know, back when that war first started, but, yeah, that's what we do.
They don't just get thrown out. You have, you have, you have a useful, so it's good to know.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Dr. Sparks, so you said there is a rotation every five years, but I know that we apply every year to DOJ. So the officers, we have more than forty-two officers that need the vests, so it's an alternate. They alternate where each officer is getting a new vest. It just depends on when their five-year life expectancy is up.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Davis?
Yes, Dr. Sparks, Chair and I want to make appointment to come down and try, and try a couple of tramos, see how they feel.
You're speaking for yourself there.
Y'all come on down. We've outfitted you with one and let you run around, let you run around a little bit with it on.
Councilman Davis?
In non-degree weather.
Are you gonna, are you gonna let them test the vest while you're wearing it?
Yeah, make sure you have the cane on.
It's herding cats. It's herding cats.
Chair kept hunting me, said we ought to go try.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chief Sparks. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda.
I think that's good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. There's no match to this. Is that right? We haven't had a match in the past.
We ought to pay half of it. We ought to pay eighteen one sixty-five. It's thirty-six, but they're going to repay us a half of it. So they pay half, we pay half.
And that, the half is coming from your, out of your budget, from the police?
Yes, it's budget.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd still like to place this on the consent agenda. And Madam Mayor, we have no other items under public. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief Sparks. We'll move on. Yes, sir. We'll move on then to item fourteen, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight.
Yes, sir.
Adopt a resolution declaring May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, 2024, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Douglasville, and Ms. Rosado is going to take this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry. Samantha Rosado, Assistant Conference Center and Tourism Director at sixty-seven hundred Church Street. Before you all, is a routine resolution declaring this Sunday, May nineteenth, through Saturday, May twenty-fifth, National Travel and Tourism Week. We have a full week planned to celebrate travel's essential role in driving our nation's economy, cultivating vibrant communities, and forging connections. Next week, we plan to pop up at several locations. We have a total of seven locations that will be popping up from Monday through Friday. Just with visitor information, it's a great way for them to kick off summer. So it'll have, you know, our new dining guide, our visitors' guide, parks programs guide, and so just different ways for either people that are in the hotels or in the restaurants to figure out ways that they can really enjoy the community this summer. We also have the historic preservation that will be on Tuesday, where we'll recognize two individuals that really help as cheerleaders in the tourism industry. And then we will have a big social media push as well. This annual tradition was established back in nineteen eighty-three by a congressional resolution, and it is a time where the US travel community comes together to celebrate the value travel holds for our economy, businesses, and personal well-being.
Ms. Rosado, one question I had before I ask anybody else. Do y'all have, do, will we be able to get access to the calendar for the, this, this week, all the different activities and where they're at and everything? Because I don't see it in the, uh, agenda.
I will give it to Kristen to send out with your highlights.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from anyone on council? Well, we'll place this on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Rosado, for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Coach Watts and Ms. Rosado, we appreciate the information. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last committee is Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item under transportation. It's authorized the mayor to sign the Georgia Department of Transportation 2024 Supplemental LMIG, LRA grant application for a grant for road maintenance in the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, hundred and fifty-three cents. Okay, Mr. Todd?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Todd Dresdo, Public Services Department, eighty-one forty-five Cedar Mountain Road. Really excited to be here tonight. I sat, stuck it out all the way here. This grant that we have before you is, you know, we usually come about once a year to apply for the LMIG program. We've already done that this year. We did that early in December. So the 2024 LMIG is already out. We've got that out to bid. We're working on that project. What we've got before you tonight is actually a second program. Excuse me. The governor has released additional funds, and so they're doing a second round. This is, they're calling it the Local Roads Assistance Program, but it's essentially a second LMIG. It's administered through the LMIG program. It's exactly like an LMIG, has all the same requirements, except for this is a zero percent match grant required from the city. So all we've got to do is sign on the dotted line. We've got some, some free money here. So the amount for the city of Douglasville is four hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And as you'll see in your attachment here, we've got a proposed project list. We do not believe in, in doing just the minimum, so we're proposing twenty streets, five point four nine miles. We estimate this project will be roughly three million dollars total. Of that, almost five hundred thousand will come from the LRA funds here, and the remaining would come from 2022 SPOST funds. So that's what we're asking you to prove tonight. If you've got any questions, be happy to take them.
Thank you so much. Have the mayor and council, have you all had a chance to look at our street list? Okay. I don't have any questions. I'm glad to see, I love free, especially when it's free money. It's great. And if there aren't any questions or comments, I'd like to add this to the consent agenda. This is not anything new that we've not done in the past. That's okay with the mayor and council? If so, Madam Mayor, there are no other items under transportation tonight.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Dresdo. We're excited about resources to resurface our streets. Thank you so much. So we'll move on then to other businesses. Is there any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? Okay, I don't see any. Updates from our city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson. Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our chief of police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Chief, you don't have anything going on this weekend?
Not this weekend, but this week, we, we, we got a car show.
Okay, I know it's always something.
Some old cars you want to bring out and show them out, shine them up.
Okay, and you had yoga last night.
Yeah, we had yoga.
You had yoga last night. Okay. But next week is a car show.
Yes.
Okay, all right. We look forward to that then. Our city manager, Ms. Marshall Hampton.
Some of you will be traveling with me tomorrow to Gainesville. We will be leaving in front of the conference center at nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen?
Nine fifteen.
If you don't, the train will be leaving at nine fifteen.
It's because it's a long way up and it's a long way back, but.
Yeah, I did right.
We will be granted by the, the mayor and the city manager there and a couple of the elected officials, so we'll tour the entire downtown.
All righty, thank you, city manager. Now we've come to the portion of our agenda. We're almost at the adjournment. But it's comments from citizens and delegates. If you have sustained the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward to give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business you're made to the city of Douglasville. We have any takers? No. All right. If we don't have any other business, then this meeting is adjourned.